We have a little call vote for attendance, please.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mr. Seber?
Here.
Mr. Randbacher?
Here.
Mr. Crawford?
Mr. Harris?
Plain Township's zoning commission duties include the following: make recommendations to the board of trustees with regard to amendments to zoning text and map. The zoning commission does not have to prove to the applicant why his or her land should not be rezoned, but rather an applicant must prove his or her case for the proposed change. Any amendment adopted by the trustees becomes effective 30 days from the date of such adoption unless a petition for referendum is filed within that 30-day period. Specific requirements for petition or referendum are set forth in Chapter 519 of the Ohio Revised Code and Chapter 3501.30 of the Ohio Revised Code. We have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Terry Seber, there are a couple that I would suggest. At first, we do need to elect officers for the commission. That is first. And second, I understand from our zoning director that the amendments relating to text changes, that is, I-69, 570, 571, and 572 are not ready for discussion and votes tonight. And I would concur in that.
Okay.
It would leave simply Amendment 573, an application by Jackson Mount Pleasant LLC for consideration.
Okay, is the representative for the proposed amendment would be, I guess, our zoning officer. Tom, is it your position that you want those first four items that were on the agenda for tonight to be postponed to a later date on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, sir. The information came in very late from RPC, and I think that the board would need more time to really go over that. So if we do it the next meeting, which will be the 12th of December, we can take up those text changes.
Are those in favor of amending the agenda as proposed to include the election of officers and to postpone the first four items on tonight's agenda?
I'll press second Mr. Seber's motion.
Okay, so, okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so the agenda will stand amended. So let's proceed now then to the election of officers. This being the first meeting of this body during the calendar year 2018, we typically on that first meeting do elect officers for the calendar year.
Yes, sir.
That basically leaves this meeting and the December meeting where those officers would serve until their replacements are elected in 2019.
Correct.
So I would open the nomination for officers.
Mr. Chairman, I would actually move to approve a slate that would include Steve Harrison as chairperson and Ian Crawford as vice chairperson and John Randbacher as secretary of the board.
Essentially keeping the same officers for the balance of the year.
I'll second that.
I'll second from Mr. Wolf. Any discussion? Are those in favor of electing the slate of officers as proposed? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, sort business of that. That leaves us, I believe, open and ready to proceed if the applicant is ready with the Jackson Mount Pleasant LLC application amendment number 573-18. That being the case, there will be opportunity for public members to speak as well as the applicant either for or against the proposal. And anyone who is going to testify, ask you to stand and raise your right hand. Members of the audience, if you intend what to speak either for or against, then I'm going to ask you to stand and raise your hand. Do you say or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true as you apparently believe same?
Yes.
Yes?
I do.
Okay. All right. My petitioner will come forward. Just so you know, apparently we have a court recorder here tonight, which is a welcome situation. The hearings are recorded to maintain a permanent record, and all testimony is given under oath. Any speaker should have signed in if you haven't already, and we ask that the speakers address the board. Conversations between the speaker and the audience or vice versa are not tolerated. The applicant will speak first and present his or her request. Next, anyone in favor will be allowed to speak, then anyone opposing may speak. If there are a group of people who are together from an association or whatever, and you have an appointed spokesperson with similar viewpoints, we would encourage that for efficiency. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, folks. My name is Tom Porter. I'm a representative for Industrial Commercial Properties, who owns a 30-acre piece that we bought from Roar Farms, which is adjacent to Mount Pleasant and Pittsburgh Avenue. And I'd like to show you what the parcel is. Can you hear?
No.
I can't hear back there.
Before you go further, who did you say you're here with the app?
Industrial Commercial Properties.
Or Mount Pleasant?
Jackson Mount Pleasant. You can own the property itself.
Okay, just so I'm clear, Jackson Mount Pleasant was our LLC?
Yes.
Was our applicant?
Yes.
And?
I'm here on behalf of them.
Okay.
It's owned by Industrial Commercial Properties.
Okay, well, that might be a good thing to explore briefly, just to point out, we want to make sure there's transparency as far as ownership, so we know if there's any conflict, interest, or whatever. Can you tell me who the members are of the Jackson Mount Pleasant LLC?
The manager is a gentleman by the name of Chris Samarigin, and the chief operating officer is Chris Salata. The two principals.
Are there any other interest holders that own more than a 5% interest in the LLC?
I don't believe so.
And you referenced another company that?
Industrial Commercial Properties is, has to be owned by Chris Samarigin, who had bought the piece from Roar Farms and established the LLC called Jackson Township Mount Pleasant.
Okay, so Industrial Commercial Properties is not a member, is not an owner?
Chris Samarigin is the owner.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
I put up a board here that shows the parcel, 30 acres. This is Pittsburgh here on this side. Mount Pleasant at the top. And what we've put up shown is basically a survey of the property, including the top graphical map. And I put on it, when we did this, we've got a buffer zone along the residential section. And at one point, I received a letter today that said, "It ought to be 50 feet." This happens to be 50 feet on that document. What we are into is an area that is changing really from agricultural to industrial. I put this up just to show some of the industrial, it tempted, meaning advantage, investment insurance, another firm here, Diboll, Performance Health. This is that flex office space that we're talking about, and ComDoc, which is under construction now. ComDoc is 108,000 square feet, you know, to be opened in March. The neighborhood has changed into industrial. We have the 30 acres, and what we're asking for is a change in the zoning from agricultural, residential, to light industrial. You know, when you go to market these properties, one of the questions that comes up very quickly is, how's it zoned? If you're going to use it to produce jobs and so forth, it's got to be zoned in more or less in an industrial fashion, and it is not that way. That's what we're asking.
So on your map, does your comp, does the owning company, do they also own this piece of property here?
We sold that piece of property to a company by the name of Turtle Bay.
Okay, so?
Okay, but the one, ComDoc is across the road, across Pittsburgh Road there, on the old Roar Farm.
Right.
Homestead.
So nothing that's being zoned has frontage on Pittsburgh?
That we're requesting for zoning? No, it does not.
Now, I've, yeah, Terry Seber, I've heard a couple statements as to ownership. I've heard the name of an individual, you said, Marigan?
Samarigin.
Samarigin and?
Salata.
Salata. Who is title owner?
Title owner is, it's an LLC.
What's the, what's the name of the LLC, just so I'm?
It's Jackson Township Mount Pleasant, et cetera.
All right. I'm just?
Yeah, it's confusing.
Well, I was curious because the application is in the name of an LLC, but then I hear two individuals. I was trying to look up on my phone to see whether there's been some change in ownership.
There has not been a change in ownership, in terms of clarity. Those are the people that are behind it.
Okay, are buying or?
No, do own.
Do own, sorry.
Samarigin owns it.
Okay, and what is the, what is the plan by the applicant? Will the applicant itself propose to develop this property, or will it upon rezoning be sold within 100 minutes?
No, we intend to develop the property, that's what I appear. And we, at the moment, we've done a lot of requests, a lot of interest in the industrial, industrial sector in that area. It's changing, it's a changing neighborhood. When we put ComDoc in and started construction, we've gotten a lot of requests. Roar Farms was one of the last pieces of, you know, virgin property, if you will, in your area, and people were interested in it. They're saying, "Hey, can we do this?" And we can't say, "Of course you can do that without a zoning change," and that's why we're?
Is there a relationship between ComDoc and the title owner to this property?
Ah, yes, between the ownership, yes.
Okay, so ComDoc has overlapping ownership with the?
No.
It does not?
ComDoc is a tenant of the owner.
Okay.
Okay.
And what is proposed for these 30 acres?
Well, we're, we're probably a little bit premature. We do not have a client who had interest from industrial clients. And chasing that is an interesting process, but what we're trying to do is set it up so that we can offer the property to an industrial client.
I note that to the immediate south of this property is, or is a fairly residential neighborhood?
Yes.
There have been discussions with representatives of that residential neighborhood regarding the proposed change to I-1?
We have not had, no.
Okay, so as you stand here today, I mean, you have no idea whether you would have support, whether you would have opposition, or simply advocate for those who live to the south of this 30-acre tract?
At this point, you're absolutely correct.
This says there's maybe a 40,000 or 50,000 square foot building. Where would that be located on the parcel exactly?
If we had a 40,000 or 50,000?
Yeah.
It could be virtually anywhere, but basically, basically, we've talked about putting one here or here. It depends on the requirements of the client, really. But basically, this is a, this is a hump here.
Hump?
A hump.
I got to say.
A hill. Okay. If we peel it off and then set the building there, that's one option. There's no other options for doing the same up here, but it depends on what we come up with in terms of client, what they really need. That's how we develop. We don't, this is not a spec operation. We're setting it up so that we'd like to set it up, and we'd like that, so that we can offer it to a client and make them tell us, "Okay, we need this, this shape, this parking, this many employees." That's, that's where we go with the target.
Mr. Porter, I have a few questions. Have you seen the Stark County Regional Planning Commission recommendation?
I have. I received it this afternoon.
When the applicant purchased this property, were you aware that it was zoned the way it currently is for owners of?
When we do our due diligence, we are aware of that.
Did you buy contingent upon the zone change? In other words, are you going to be the owner whether you get this approved or not tonight?
Oh, we're going to be the owner, yes.
Did the owner reserve, the applicant reserve any ingress and egress rights to Pittsburgh Road with this site?
Yes.
So that if need be, traffic issues related to Mount Pleasant could be avoided by routing traffic directly to Pittsburgh?
Could be split and run in 22. The answer is yes. We have an easement across the northern end of the 9-acre parcel. Of course, Mount Pleasant, we have direct access to. So it would probably be split depending on the number of employees and how the unit's set up, I guess.
I'm noticing that one of the concerns of RPC has to do with traffic and the fact that the amount of traffic to the site and the fact that there's a single frontage on Mount Pleasant could, could be an issue.
Yes.
Do you recognize that that's a planning issue for, especially for a primarily residential area to the east and north?
Yes, we do recognize that. You know, their comments are, we discussed, issues that we discussed all day long. You know, buffering, buffering's a key issue. That's why it's on that plan. It wasn't, that was not prepared after we got the letter. And it's a concern that we've always had. If we, the applicant, we got a buffer, of course.
Okay, so the buffer I see is on the southern portion of the track you're proposing to rezone. And immediately to the east is what I would call a green space watershed area owned by the Stark County Commissioners, which is basically for drainage control.
Yes.
Okay, is, we propose a buffer between your operations and that?
We hadn't really considered, we considered that green space as a buffer, but we're open. We're not, we're not saying, hey, no, we wouldn't do it. It's just that we, we looked at it, we said, "Hey, this space really is already a green area. It's already a buffer, and it's more than, you know, 50 feet of the county that the Regional Planning Commission has asked for." That doesn't affect, that we're really to it.
Tom, is that a residential zoning where the, where the county has? Is that?
That is rural residential.
Okay, and so I just want the applicant to understand, whenever an industrial, light industrial abuts any sort of residential, our zoning code requires, I believe, a 50-foot buffer yard.
Okay.
And we call a buffer yard, not an open space. It means mounding, planting, and all of that. And that's not shown on your map, but I'm understand, I want you to understand that if this were approved, that there would need to be a buffer in there.
Absolutely. We don't have problems with that. You know, it's just a matter of understanding. We did not understand it that way. That's all.
Well, this is Plain Township, and I know you're called Jackson Township, but, and I know you're affiliated in essence with the acreage to the west of this site, but your history with them isn't necessarily your history with us.
And we're not trying to make it so. Please understand that. Making the properties is a mystery sometimes.
Right.
Anyway, yes, if, if we need to put a buffer there, we'll put a buffer there. That's not a problem. You know, we'll take it subject to that.
Now, this, this site was not included as an I-1 site in our comprehensive plan for the township. And Tom, do we have any I-1 acreage in the township that is available for I-1 development?
Nothing this large.
Okay. And are you aware of any move afoot to change the comprehensive plan?
We are looking at getting together with Stark County to develop a new comprehensive plan. The old one was in 2012, and it needs to be updated.
As the director of planning for the township, do you see that this is one area that would, would likely be addressed in the, in your view, in the, in the plan, in the future plan?
Yes, I would, I would look at that area as an area that needs to be reviewed.
One of the concerns addressed by the Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Porter, is that typically we like to see as planners uses that are compatible that adjoining. And an industrial use abutting a residential use is typically not something that a good planner would look for. We'd like to see step downs, if you will, in uses so that we don't have such an extreme use like an industrial use up against a residential use. Do you understand that typically that's, that's the planner's goal?
I understand that. I also understand that in a number of communities, not necessarily this one, but in a number of communities, a device used for that purpose is a planned unit developer, okay, which generally incorporates the setbacks, the necessary green space, et cetera. You know, perhaps that, you know, would you consider that type of operation?
Well, I can't speculate, but I can tell you, but I can tell you that it probably would not have the same exact objections from regional planning that the current proposal would have.
Well, yes.
And of course, if, if this one doesn't fly, you can't, today, you can't resubmit it exactly as it is, but you'd be permitted to make a different application.
Okay. But is, is the, is there a PUD or planned unit developer in Stark County?
We have?
Or in Plain Township?
Yeah.
Okay. That would be something we definitely would consider, of course.
I also want to address the concern that there is this county-owned flood control area to the east.
Yes.
And this board has heard over the last year or so, a lot of information about riparian concerns with preserving water, clean water, and what can you assure us of anything from the, as far as what the proposed zone change would, would or would not, as having an effect on the, on the water, surface water in the area?
Well, as, as you, well, no, we're subject to all the state law, city law, so forth in existence, and we do obey those. So if there is a requirement for detention basin, it is met. We are putting a detention basin across the road on the other one. There will be a detention basin on the 9-acre parcel, that's on the other side. So I mean, these items are part of the building approval, the building plans, so.
Okay. Specifically, I-1 districts have certain limitations on what kind of industrial uses can be allowed there in our township, and they aren't that more, that more heavy manufacturing, heavy type uses. They are more, in fact, I'll let you read the section. Are you familiar with the section, or what, what type of uses are permitted?
To some extent, yes.
And it seems like that the, the, the uses, any uses that are permitted in a S1, B1, or B2, basic business type uses, as well as creameries, bottling, ice manufacturing, cold storing plants, manufacturing, compounding and processing, packaging, and treatment of the following products: baked goods, dairy goods, candy, food products, electrical or electrical appliances, instruments, devices, et cetera, musical instruments, noveties, and similar small rubber, plastic, or metal products, and products that, products from previously and elsewhere prepared materials, such as cardboard, cellophane, clay, cloth, fibers, glass, leather, metals, et cetera, and professional and scientific instruments, clerical or office equipment. You can also have experimental or testing or research facilities. You can have motor, freight, garage, truck, or transfer terminals, including office and warehouse storage, distributor warehouses, wholesale outlets, bulk operations, bottling in or packaging, printing and publishing operations, mini storages in the warehouses, and accessory uses to those type of uses. This would not typically be like a refinery, such thing that would be a more oppressive industrial type use. So understanding that, and understanding that most of those activities and uses occur within buildings.
Yeah.
All right. Would it be your representation to this board that the applicant would, would intend to have activities there that would not be objectionable to the adjoining property owners or affect their values significantly, or can we get some assurance about that?
I think that if we end up with a PUD, that would be part of a PUD, number one. Number two, we have no intention of putting heavy industry. Number two, we have no intention of putting heavy industry in there. The type of client that we've been interested in and has expressed interest in this particular property, uh, is similar to what I call COMDOC. COMDOC is a heavy office user. They have warehouse, and they have some light manufacturing. Light manufacturing generally is assembly, et cetera. That is what we're talking about. That is what you described in your research. There's no, no stamping plant, nothing of that nature involved. And that is not what we're seeking.
How do you believe the traffic would be impacted with this proposed zone change? What would it mean for the, for the roads and the other users of the roads?
It's going to impact, obviously, but if we put a residential neighborhood on it, it would do the same thing. Uh, maybe not quite as severe, because generally, it's going to impact, of course.
The vehicles might be semis rather than passenger vehicles, though, if they were residential development versus. Do you have any idea what the tra, traffic would be?
No, not without having a plan.
You know what it's going to be on the, on the acreage to the west?
On the COMDOC side or on your, right, adjacent to this one?
Right.
I have no idea what's adjacent to this one. If it's a flex space, you're probably dealing with two or three semis a day, maybe. On the other side, I can answer that a little bit, because of all the planning. And basically, those are trucks that are loaded at night, moved out during the day with the box trucks. They have maybe three to six semis a week. I mean, it's not heavy truck, right?
Is the route usually used Pittsburgh Avenue to Route 2477?
Probably.
So.
I can't really answer that, but, yeah.
I mean, the access to the interstate, though, is through Pittsburgh to the south.
Absolutely.
To the 2477. If this site were compared to those sites, though, with the only ingress and egress currently on Mount Pleasant, that would now bring this traffic up onto Mount Pleasant and closer to the residential areas that are of concern. You understand what I'm asking you?
I understand what you're asking. I don't quite agree with either.
Okay, well, tell me, tell me what, where I can get it wrong.
Well, if you brought it out on Mount Pleasant from this particular property, you'd end up making a left turn with the trucks, come down to Pittsburgh, and then back down to the south. The residential area off of Mount Pleasant is off and to the northeast, as such. On Mount Pleasant, that's where it is.
So you're saying if the, uh, the impact would only be from Pittsburgh Avenue to the entrance to the site?
Yes, basically.
But you're also telling me you have ingress and egress reserved to the center of this tract from Pittsburgh?
Yeah. Actually, it's moving edge here, so I'm going to edge here.
Okay. Did any of the questions I had posed create any additional questioning for the other members of the board?
I'm just trying to visualize a semi getting on Mount Pleasant. Get that front lane on the side. That would be a neighbor.
What we do, what I've done, basically, when we do a driveway, I put a fifty-foot radius on the drive so that, you know, bring a semi in or out, the tracking is inside that curve. If you use the standard state dictated curve, they'll let over it. So I always increase the size of it, so the guy can turn and actually be in the lane, be in a twelve-foot lane. That's what's on Mount Pleasant, is on Pittsburgh, a twelve-foot lane. Does that help or not?
Yeah, I think so.
It's controlled, by the way, we, we put the flare on the drive.
Now, most of your access to the freeway, you said you're going down to shuffle, or are you just going to take Mount Pleasant right over to the airport?
Uh, they probably will do either or both. Some, I, I've watched it. I'm the owner's rep on the COMDOC property, so I've watched the trucks and the traffic and so forth on the whole thing. And I've watched some semis come out of Dygo, they come around, they go around, they go up to the airport and back. Some of them go to shuffle and back. It depends, I think, on the driver and his experience in the neighborhood. I, there's no specific control that I know of that says, hey, you got to do this.
Right. Any further inquiries by the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now hear from any proponents that are, as members of the public, who wish to speak in behalf of these applicants. Do you have anybody? Okay. Now, we're going to open it up to those who wish to speak in opposition. And if you've signed in already in the back, please come forward one at a time and take your name and address and who you'd like to hear from. That's it.
Thank you. My name is Joe Gaffley, I'm an architect. I'm also a developer, developed the original subdivision of the survey farm on the top, the top plant that is adjacent to this proposed industrial area.
To the south?
Uh, yes, to the south.
Okay.
Cranwood Mill. And I just have a couple of.
What is your rest, address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty-eight fifty-five State Street, Greentown, Ohio. I do own a couple of parcels still there that I've bought, that's where I got my letter. And going through, I have a lot of different notes, but the first thing that I, that I wanted to do, get up the line, I put, and I didn't have a lot of copies, I'm sorry. But basically, this is the parcel in the outline in red. Now, you all have the same thing. I just, I blew this up to a much bigger line. This blue line is our corner of Plain Township. I mean, this is Jackson, this is Lake, so this is, we're in the northwest corner of Plain Township. And the reason that I brought this overall map is I wanted everybody to get sort of a feel of how this thing is all developed. If you go across to Jackson Township and to Lake, we are industrial zoning. There's industrial zoning, existing industrial zoning. But everything else that we're working to, you can see from the plats, it's all, I'm not going to say all that's a, a major statement, it's mostly residential development. So this red outlined area in our corner of Plain Township, we're talking about taking it from rural residential, which is our most stringent requirement, because we can do agricultural, and we can do single-family homes, public buildings, things like that, and that's pretty much all we can do there. We're going to I-1, which is industrial, and again, the worst is I-2, I-1 is the next, and we're jumping this whole thing from residences, single family, to commercial industrial buildings that can get up to sixty feet high, based on the zoning code. So, again, I just printed this out before I came, because I thought, I just wanted everyone to be aware of that this is a major residential community at this point. Again, I, I don't represent my family and friends that I sold properties to, that they built houses on and expended lots of money on over the years, and like where they're living, but I, I know from hearing it from sister and neighbors and everything else that they do oppose it, and I'll let them share with that also. The one question I have, if I may, and I'm sure probably the group didn't hear it either, could you share what the regional planning report was?
I mean, I, the recommendation was to deny the application, and they gave a number of reasons.
Okay, and that's fine, because we can, we can talk to Bob Malin, we can talk to him, we can get more information, or Joe Underwood, that's not a problem. I just, I wanted to know for myself, and then for the group here, too.
Senator Bully Cracker, I have no problem sharing.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thanks. I think the big thing is, is that the, like I say, the family and friends here behind me, they bought their homes as residential use. Typically, zoning is a standard or a set of laws that protect their investments. Well, now, their investment is being challenged by the I-1 use that wants to go in there. There's, I guess the other thing I questioned on the, in the Jackson Township side, that whole is I-1 use all up and down. They purchased some of that as part of their deal. There's other I-1 use there. Do they go through and purchase additional I-1 use that's already zoned industrial, rather than taking residential land? And in my talking and dealings with Mr. Rohr, when they were going through negotiations, they bought that portion of land on a graded scale for basically residential sale cost. So there, again, that's neither here nor there, I guess.
I'd like to explore that in a minute. You have information, you believe that pricing to this, for whatever reason, pricing to this applicant factored in the fact that he may not get his industrial?
No, no, I can't say that.
Okay.
All I can say is when they were doing their negotiations, they hadn't purchased it yet. But Mr. Rohr came to my office and just wanted to ask me some questions, talked about it, and he had said that they had a gradient scale on the different acreage for the I-1, the different things that they were purchasing for a certain amount of dollars. That's all I know, I can't share.
That sounds like good business to me.
Or?
That sounds like good business.
It is, it is. But I'm sure here, though, that.
I understand what you're saying.
All right. The, the other comment was, it was being said that it was a favor that it was going to be a fifty-foot setback on all these locations when they talked about the area, but as you had mentioned, that fifty foot is a minimum requirement for any I-1 use abutting a residential area anyway, so they're giving us minimums on that. We talked a little bit about, and some of these are just comments, again, that here or there, but for the group to know what's going on. We talked about a number of aces off the property. When I was, when I developed a lot on top, the fire department had you, regional planning fire department had you put another means of egress, so we added one to the north to go into that area. Again, being able to use that would definitely be taboo, but the fire department's still going to require them to have two aces off of that thirty-some acre site. So even if they have worked it out in the spring to go out to Pittsburgh, they're going to end up having to go out to Mount Pleasant also, just to provide the fire department the two means of egress.
Just, uh.
I'm sorry.
Before you go further, just so I can come on up.
Okay.
Are you talking about this?
Yes, yes, right there, yeah.
So if I could describe for the audience, you're talking about a dedicated treaty that basically deadends to the south line of the proposed site.
Correct.
Which may end up being, in your view, an egress or ingress point for fire trucks or whatever to this site?
Depending on what planning, I can't project that. That's going to be Joe Underwood planning, and they would have to look at that, I can't. But right now, that is something that I have to put in as part of the development.
Correct.
Okay. Can you go back to the podium?
And I guess, as far as tonight, is, is there going to be a decision made tonight? I know they even talked about possibly, and they talked to Tom about planned unit development, and I know that I went from a zone change about seven, ten years ago in Plain Township, and went from business to residential and didn't get the zoning, so I'm hoping that we'll be a little bit stronger going the other direction. But tonight, will there be a direction, yes or no, a table? Just for all of us here, how would that procedure be?
They were both going to be in, oh, sorry, go.
I was going to say, an application in front of us, unless withdrawn, requires action by this board.
Okay.
A decision on the application in front of us.
And with that, then your recommendation then goes on to the trustees, the presentation, and then they.
Totally their decision anyway.
Right. But then after that, because this is the part that I went into, and not to enlighten you, don't change, after that, if there is potential power for the people to go through a referendum and put it on the ballot.
Correct.
And again, I'm just sharing that information, I, I don't know where it's going to go, but I just want to give them, so that they know the process.
Any amendment adopted by the trustees becomes effective thirty days from the date of such adoption. Unless a petition for a referendum is filed within that thirty-day period, according to my cheat sheet that I'm supposed to read.
Again, I don't represent all of the persons here, I just wanted to share, as quote, the developer of the original subdivision up on top that was in the RR, and we designed it to those standards. We have one and two family below it to the west, we have industrial down to the west also, and created our own buffers and that, but that was all existing zoning, and we maintained it that way.
I have another minute of your time.
You, you sure may.
As good stewards of our township's land.
Okay.
And you as a, me having some experience as a developer or planner, could you share any insights you might have on how to reconcile the need, apparent need for some industrial uses within our township and the revenues and tax base that comes from that?
I understand.
As well as the protection of and honoring the commitment that you feel has been made, and rightfully so, to residential owners who have made their home in our township and who deserve to have enjoyable living spaces?
I agree.
What could we do with this site to reconcile these?
Well, I, I guess the one thing that I wanted to do when I got to the office first thing this morning, is I was hoping I could have gone and talked to someone from regional planning, because I would have liked to have found out for Jackson, for Plain, for Lake, for Nishon, for all our local townships, what's the breakdown of single-family, duplex, I-1s, I-2s, to see how we, as a township, fit into that. And, and again, I didn't have the prob, I didn't have the time to do that. So you were asking me how I would, that's something that would take a lot more time, because you.
But that's one of the first things you'd do, you'd assess the overall picture, maybe do it as a, as a general plan, not just site-specific?
Right. Because see, I'm not going to say it's a thirty-some acre parcel, so I'm not going to say it's spot zoning, but with what we have in that corner of the township right now, that's spot zoning just that, but again, spot zoning is usually smaller parcels, not a thirty-plus acre parcel. But we're still taking a, a residential, rural residential, it's not even one and two, it's a rural residential, which is basically agriculture's okay, single family's okay, and then you've got public buildings and a few other things in there, so. So anyway, I, I appreciate the time, thank you. I wish I could have had more information and shared what the overall picture was, but I apologize that I just didn't have the time to pull that information up.
Are you leaving this for us?
Yes, you may have.
Actually, most of the other communities have about seventy percent residential, thirty percent green house. Our community right now is sitting closer to eighty percent, which. Our community right now is sitting closer to 80%, which 20% for everything else. So some of the master plan, they were trying to bring it down closer to 70%, 70 and 30. If that answers your question.
Well, that helps a little bit, but then you also have to, you also have to pop into it, locations, because we have plain locations where I've heard here about discussions about going out to Mount Pleasant, are we going to go right up to the airport? Are we going to go back to, you know, one of the other streets? And, you know, Mount Pleasant isn't upgraded enough to really handle that amount of traffic. Whereas if you went into other areas of the township where you had more readily available land, could that be possible? And these are all hypothetical, I can't give the answers because I don't know. I appreciate you at least sharing that so I have a better idea on what that ratio is. But again, until you can do a study and look at all of those different pieces of lands and adjacent seats to highways, it'd be tough. But again, thank you very much.
I'm going to mark this Joe Caplia map?
That's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Sure, come on up.
Good evening, I'm Thomas Fleischdom, 887 Cranwood Street. And I'll try to, we haven't collaborated, so, but I will try not to be redundant on some of the points that are made. I have a couple notes that I made, would you like a copy, I have some copies, or throw it up to me?
Can you spell your I thing?
Sure. So the first page here is, in doing my research, first page is go to the website and I appreciate, you know, the zoning, adding the website and what it says on the mission statement and on the purpose statement. And it talks twice in the opening paragraph about protecting property values and then later on about maximizing property values. That gets to some of the points that Mr. Caplia had made. And then of course, I think the question that you just asked, Mr. Harrison, was about how did we develop it in a rational manner? So I think that's kind of one of the pieces. The next page on the narrative page that the applicant filled out, talks about the construction on the Comdoc and the other property. These facilities are in Jackson Township, not Plain Township. So I know they're adjacent and want to be good neighbors, but this is about Plain Township. And in addition to there being a movement towards light industrial in the area, and driving around my neighborhood, I also see single-family houses going up too. So apparently there's also some movement in the, in the area towards single-family housing. So in addition to the need for light industrial, apparently there's also additional need for some single-family housing as well. The next page I have there has a piece of that map up there and I think it's interesting that that little green square in the upper-left corner, that's kind of the area we're talking about. And I think it's interesting that it's in green and it just happens to be so colored for the way that it's zoned. But the Google Maps picture that I was able to snap is also very green. You'll notice we've got the farm there, the residential, and even the businesses along Cleveland Avenue, those zone general business are still relatively green. I think that's one of our concerns, is maintaining some green space in our own little corner of Plain Township. So the next page shows a couple of things that are light industrial. I've got in there the, essentially the mining operation that's down along Columbus Avenue and some of the warehouses. And to answer the question, and I understand it's the not-in-my-backyard issue, right? Nobody wants it next to them. But I'll also go back to Mr. Harrison, what you've said about step-down. You know, if we've got zones where we can increase industrial in sort of a manner that's self-consistent or where the industrial is next to each other, kind of like they've done in Jackson Township, that seems to make sense. To jump right from single-family residential to this industrial, just eating up one square in the upper-left corner of our township, just doesn't seem rational to me that that's not...
So let me stop you there. In your view, division of this parcel into maybe some I-1 zone to the west and then the areas maybe more south and east to a lesser intrusive use to be more compatible with residential would be, in your mind, more stewardly in our planning?
Yes, I would, I would go with the more, although it seems, as I look at this map over here and I looked at it online, if we divide it into four quadrants, there's, from what I can tell, no light industrial anywhere in the upper-left quadrant of that map. In fact, I think it's a six-by-six grid, the upper 60%, the upper two-thirds of each one, there's no light industrial anywhere in that area. There's some down along Columbus and a little bit up along Middle Grant. So even to take this area here and think about subdividing 30 acres to put a little island of light industrial, you know, I guess my opinion would be to just leave it, it's something more consistent with the single-family residential that we have now, but that's just my opinion. And then finally, you know, homeowner concerns, I've written it's really my concerns, that, again, what we just talked about, that this would be not necessarily a rational development to put an island of light industrial in the midst of the single-family, the rural, even the small businesses, just doesn't strike me as rational. We talked a little bit about the 50-foot buffer. I was trying to kind of get a distance thing to kind of wrap my mind around what 50 feet is, less than the distance from the pitcher's mound to home plate. So we're talking a pretty short buffer from where we would have residential going into light industrial. Reading through the list, as you were reading, some of the things that you would open the door to, and without a client being identified yet, there's sand and gravel or other mining. I think the area that's now that basin, I think sand and gravel was extracted from there, if I'm correct, which kind of left that thing set.
You're talking about conditionally permitted uses?
Yes.
Not permitted?
Okay, so domino effect, right? So this is the first step and then conditionally permitted. Tall structures up to six stories was mentioned, inconsistent with the existing homes. And then the warehouse facilities and heavy vehicles traffic, that was already mentioned. So the way the property is developed could have a significant impact on the property value, values, Mr. Capia has already addressed that. And again, circling back to the original statement on the front page of the zoning is that two times it was mentioned in there about protecting property values and maximizing property values, so. And again, I just want to, the other point I want to remake is, you know this, it's Plain Township, this is not Jackson. Jackson can zone and do whatever they want, Lake as well. We've got our little corner up there of Plain Township, I guess I'd like to see it stay something either zoned the way it is, something consistent with residential, or at least some stepped-down transition between the single-family residential and what Jackson has going on, including their property. That's all.
Any questions for this witness?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Ma'am? Did I miss someone?
Sorry.
Oh, Susan.
I'm over with Deidre, I'm with Susan, that's F-I-X, and we live at 806 for Surby Avenue.
Say again, eight, address?
806 for Surby Avenue, we're fast. And I'll just bring one personal thing up quickly. We, I just retired and we're moving back to Pittsburgh, and we put our house up for sale at the same time as they put that sign up at the end of Surby. And we've had people come down our road and even after they've had an appointment to see our home and then declined to even come in and see it. And so my personal experience that I'm really fearful now, I mean, we love our home here, we love to live in here, we love our neighbors, and we were hoping to sell our home to somebody that wanted it, it just isn't the money. And I really am fearful that we're, you know, even if we can't sell it or somebody looks at it, the property value is going to come down quite a bit. The real estate agent's thinking actually up to almost $30,000 on our home because we've put a lot in it. And, you know, so that's something we're fearful of, they're thinking lights and, you know, noise and I'm afraid, like, there's so much traffic on Pittsburgh now, they put that light in coming out of Orion and that stuff will be diverted through Berkey that, you know, although it's not going to be in and out of maybe exactly our neighborhood, it would really affect it, but, you know, I have the same concerns as everybody else that live in that neighborhood. Fortunately, it's just really just our luck that we put our house on work and not had agents say, they actually came for an appointment, see the sign, and tried to run the lead. Nobody's looked at our home yet.
I have a question for you. Were you referencing the sign that's up?
Yeah, there's a sign that there's for the meeting tonight, the zoning meeting.
Is there another sign that invites potential industrial tenants to call? Does it advertise the site as industrial?
She referred, does the sign have any...
I'm asking, I was out to the site and I saw an owner's sign that appears to be on the site inviting industrial tenants to inquire.
I don't know.
Separate from the zoning sign that advertised the...
Wait, wait, you can only tell one at a time.
I got a picture of the sign.
If I could, if I had to see.
You're done.
The one on our street, 104th Street.
And was that a smaller one that it says about the meeting tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions for this witness?
You looked on Surby.
Yeah, 806 for Surby, one right on the corner.
Okay, who did I miss over here that's ready? Somebody wanted to come up? Sir? Come on up.
I'll be brief, my name is Richard, I live at 3763 Cranwood Street Northwest. My property abuts this proposed zoning. I am opposed to rezoning this property. I lived at my home since 1991, I invested a lot of money in, like Susie, I'm concerned about property value. I'm getting here of retirement too and the home is in, and I don't see my investment fall. We have an excess of light industrial, industrial parks in the area. He thinks there's a need for it, but you look over at Mayfair Industrial Park right there at Pittsburgh and Mayfair, it's been there for 45 years, they still haven't sold all that property. There's a prime spot right there at Pittsburgh, Mayfair, Mount Pleasant and Mayfair, up for sale, no one's buying it, so there's not a whole lot of them. If you go down on Altman towards Greensburg Road, they're developing that, it's all been graded and ready for industrial and it abuts a railroad track. Look up to the courts of Green where Maps Air Museum is, there's a lot of land up there that's for sale. And I don't see where there's a real need for another industrial park in our little corner of Plain Township. I'm concerned about if they would change light industrial, about the excess light, it would be light pollution, worried about noise pollution with excess trucks, garbage trucks coming in at any time of the day, night. Infrastructure, Mount Pleasant, he talks about, oh, we'll make it a little bit wider there. I drive 100 miles a day with my job, I see trucks trying to make the corner, they're not going to make that corner on Mount Pleasant, not without widening the road. So then if you have to widen the road, it puts a burden on taxpayers because now there's excess money going into taking care of their business. And basically that's all I have to say, but I'm worried about my property value. Thank you.
Quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Your home is situated in what direction relative to this...
I'm south, I'm on the south, on Cranwood.
Is that the area that Mr. Caplia referred to that he developed?
He developed the upper part, I'm two houses away from that.
Okay. Any questions for this witness? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, your turn.
Hi, my name is Florence Barber, I live at 801 Berkey Northwest. And my property is not directly adjacent to the one you questioned, but being on Berkey Road, we're already seeing quite a bit of traffic cut through. Mount Pleasant already has a huge burden on it, I drive that to my work every day, and to be a truck driver trying to come out of their property during rush hour, in fact, that's a challenge I wouldn't want. Inevitably, it would require a stoplight to control the traffic to give them room to come out on the road. But my concern with my property is the traffic, and it's not truck traffic, it's the employee traffic. Whatever business they would open there, obviously they're going to have staff, maybe there's two or three companies working there. And it's not this morning and evening rush hour, it's lunchtime rush hour, and I can't tell you how many times I've cleaned up my front yard with someone's lunch bag that they've tossed out of their car window. I would ask the board if they'd grant a request and keep this zoning as it is currently. Thank you.
Any questions for this witness? Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
I'm James Allison, and I live next door to Richard Grelle at 3743 Cranwood, retired from Timken, I've been there since '72, put many a thousand dollars in my house and I, he said exactly what I was going to say, I don't, with all the other available properties around, I don't know why they have to pick on that little piece of Plain Township for light industrial when like 50 feet is maybe from here to here, and who knows? Our mine and his and a lot of other people's here property is right next to that and I don't really see the need for it. I mean, that big swamp area is right there also and I would think there'd be a lot of other places that they could develop light industrial and to pick on that little piece of property for all the reasons that all the other people have said, Joe Capia and that, so that's all I have to say, so.
Any questions? Thank you. Gentlemen?
Hello, my name is Ken Daisley, I live at 3781 Cranwood. I have a last house and old a lot, but I live at the Dead End Street, and we moved in in 1977, raised our kids there, and Mr. Caplia put the lot began on to the west of us. At that point, we weren't real happy, but it's been real good. I mean, that was more... I mean, there's traffic on the street, but not bad, but, you know, like you said in the beginning, the purpose of zoning is to protect land values and to protect what's there. And to go from rural residential, we've got a farm field back there, I mean, the deer and the turkey and everything else are out there, to go from that to an industrial site is, you know, it boggles my mind that we even think about that. You know, one of the things, if it gets rezoned, there's no promises they can sell it and, you know, it can be, you know, like we said, conditional uses. Some of mine are like is truck trailers, we could have a truck trailer in there and 24/7, we could have noise and trucks and, you know, runoff from trucks breaking hydraulic lines. I worked in an industrial plant for my life doing engineering design, and I don't think a 50-foot radius is nearly enough for semis. I put 70 foot in and they couldn't hit that, so I'm not sure that's good, but pretty much what everybody said. I'm retired now, I've hired a couple years, it's, I don't plan on selling the house right away, but I don't want the property value to go down there, but I want my enjoyment to look out my backyard and, you know, now I see birds and deer and trees and I'm going to see... And I'm going to see trucks or six story buildings or whatever. So, uh, you know, just pretty much same thing. But I don't, I don't think it's a proper use for that land at this point.
So your concerns are both aesthetic and safety? Meaning the concerns about you expressed with the, uh, truck servicing areas or whatever, that that somehow might affect my property?
No, that drainage basin, I mean, you paved this whole thing and then get, again, you're going to get a lot more insurance form want to look at that. But you're going to get runoff. And I worked in industrial site. There is no such thing as clean industrial site. I mean, there's hydraulic planes breaking and trucks dumping stuff and, and things.
And that's what I mean by safety.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for this witness?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jean Capley of Arioma, Joe's sister. Um, I guess some of the concerns I have, have already been spoken.
Address?
Where do you live?
Oh, I know, I'm sorry. Thirty nine ten Cranwood Street. But then I also, I have two properties. So I also own the empty lot next door to me. So that can impact me twofold. And it's my, my lot butts up against the proposed zoning change area. Um, I guess what I wanted to point out too is that regarding to the traffic. And they were talking about being able to go out on Pittsburgh. Well, isn't it, I don't know, it's not plain township, but isn't it in the place of the works, they're trying to put in roundabouts in that area by shuffle to ease the traffic there. I read that in the Kent repository not long ago that, you know, I just can't envision semi trucks going around these roundabouts. They want to put two of these there, one by, um, Orion and then one by shuffle. So that was a big concern there. Which then would direct all that traffic to Mount Pleasant.
Pittsburgh and youthful, you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. They were talking about. I read that in the paper.
No, we've heard that.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
I just wanted to make sure I was hearing you.
Trust me. And then too, that would put a lot of that traffic then going the other direction, which, and again, I live on survey, so I'm up on top of the hill. I can see Comdok, I've heard all their noise all summer long, all bulldozers. I see their lights coming shining up into my household at night. So, I mean, you know, I've just been impacted by that. And Joe, how far is that, would you say, from where I live down to Comdok?
I know, six hundred feet.
Six hundred feet and I can hear noise, I can see lights. So, you know, I'm impacted by that. Um, let's see, another thing I wanted to say is about traffic. And I guess too, if, you know, if there was, you know, if the zoning did take place to light industrial, you know, we have no idea what they're going to put on that. I mean, it could be, the zoning, I just want to try to straighten this out. It could be, the zoning could be changed. But then once it's changed, we have no control over what goes in that space, correct?
The uses permitted in an I one space were those that we read or those that might be conditionally permitted on a separate application by subsequently by, uh, someone who wants to, uh, broaden use, uh, within the permitted conditional uses.
Okay.
So as far as controlling.
Right.
We're, by designating a zoning district, the township does regulate the uses.
Okay.
Not which of the permitted uses may be done, any of the permitted uses may be done. How have I answered your?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And then, I'm going to be able to get my phone because you were talking about the sign at the end of survey. There is a sign on Pittsburgh that talks about industrial, but that was the for sale sign for the land. But the sign that was at the end of survey was about the plain, you know, that there was a zoning, a request for a zoning change. And that's the sign that's at the end of survey street that someone else was referencing.
You didn't see another sign behind that?
No, I, I, I have pictures of both of them. Can I show you? Sorry, I don't know. Okay, so this is the one at the end of, it's your typical probably plain township sign.
Right. And we do that for purposes of notifying interested parties like yourself that there's going to be a meeting on a zoning.
And then also, I am a neighboring property and I never got certified letter. I saw, because I walk this, I walk the streets. This way, this is like the for sale sign that's down along. So you're talking about it has industrial on it? Can you see that? That's the one you said on Pittsburgh Avenue.
So the word, the fact that it has the word industrial on it, maybe refers to the fact that one of the owners is, is proud of industrial commercial property?
Right, I did, yeah.
I didn't know that when I read the sign. It looked like it was an advertisement for investors based on rural residential.
You know, all that, other than that I, you know, would really, you know, declining their request, I, you know, it would just really impact myself and all my neighbors. And again, at the end of that cul-de-sac, it's a beautiful site. And, you know, the allotment sits up high too. So we're going to be looking down on all this stuff. And, I don't know, it looks different than all the other lovely things you see. There are beautiful sunsets and how that impacts it. Can you spell your name for me, please? Okay, C A P L E A dash V A R I O L A. You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erica Pilch Lesnick. K E L C H dash S L E S N I C K. And I live at three nine one seven, uh, my husband's Scott and I live at three one nine one seven Cranwood, which is the, uh, that cul-de-sac that is south of there. And we.
You're the house directly behind the middle of the property. Right here?
Yeah, right, that, yeah. If you look at the cul-de-sac, we're just to the, on the east side of the cul-de-sac. And our backyard is right against the property that's up for discussion. Um, and we re, we just recently built a house less than two years ago there. And when we were looking at the property, um, you know, we were, we saw that there was a farm next door and, and we were, you know, oh, what's going to happen with that? Well, don't worry, it's, it's zoned for residential, it's okay. Yeah, and you kind of were reassured by that. Um, and now, and I, I just want to say thank you for taking this, for having this meeting and thank you Tom for the time you spent when I stopped by this week. Um, now, it, it sounded, I heard two different things from the, the person proposing the change or requesting the change. One is that they had a specific plan in mind for a property and another that it, it sounded very ambiguous what they could do with it. And that's, that's a big concern of mine is that we really don't know exactly what we are accepting here. Um, and it could potentially be very tall buildings that are only, and could be anything that's fifty feet away from us. And if you think about how close you're allowed to build a fireplace to your house, it's, you know, that, that might be fifty feet or twenty five feet or something like that. And it's not much harder than that, even you could have anything there. Um, not only the noise, the, the sound, but also the environmental impact, the fumes, you know, and just all, all kinds of things like that. And then of course, how it, how it's going to look and, and the aesthetics are a concern. Um, property values have already been discussed. Um, I, I just, I'm just very uncomfortable with not even really knowing for sure what we're accepting. And also the buffer, what exactly that buffer is going to be. Um, it could be a mound with a few trees on top of it, like you see around golf courses. It could be, you know, would they plant with a forest, you know? I mean, it, it, and can we, uh, my question is, can we specify that?
There is a definition of a buffer yard that's, it's fine, it's fine within our zoning resolution. And it does give a number of alternatives, basically walls, fences, uh, trees, plantings, moundings or combinations of that. But it's basically, um, a visual, a solid visual differentiation so that the one side doesn't see the other side.
So you actually, it has to truly block your, the site?
I would refer you to the zoning ordinance, but this isn't our first rodeo. We, we, we have a definition of what a, a buffer yard is for, in our township resolution.
Yeah, because when you hear the potentially pretty sixty feet tall the buildings they build, you just wonder how on earth are you going to block that from our parasite?
I don't want to mislead you to believe that just because our definition is there that it would be adequate in this particular instance. Only that we already have a definition. So, so an applicant would have to meet a specific criteria that's already been established.
Thank you. So anyway, yeah, just, just not knowing for sure what's going in there. And that long list that, that you're able to do with, excuse me, a light industrial zoning is a little concerning. Just, you know, there's so many things that can be done as compared to residential. So thank you for taking all this into consideration in your decision.
Any questions for this witness? Thank you. Anybody else have comments? Sir, come on up.
Yes, my name is Tim Fix. And I live on the corner of Survey and Cranwood. Uh, I think one thing that maybe everybody's not focusing on is the noise from all this. He says there's going to be loading trucks at night at this property. Can you imagine the noise that you're going to have? Also, we forgot that there's a church on the corner there and a cemetery. Isn't it pretty stupid to have a sixty foot building besides a church and a cemetery? Not to mention the pollution. I mean, there's a lot of things that don't make sense here. It's going to look so out of place. And, and, and Mount Pleasant, how are you going to put trucks on Mount Pleasant? Does that, have you know, you, you know where Mount Pleasant is? You're going to put trucks on Mount Pleasant and then have traffic, everyday traffic? And how many, how many cars is this business going to have? A hundred? A hundred more cars on Pleasant Road? At Tim, when Timken gets out at five o'clock, have you ever been on Mount Pleasant Road? This doesn't even make sense. This, this issue wouldn't even be thought of.
There are traffic impact in other, uh, studies that typically are required as part of the development process. So part of those concerns, I am quite empathetic with you about that. Some of those concerns are not typically issues that we are able to address in our zoning. It might be considered as part of the overall plan by those who developed, who, those who developed the plan and approve our, uh, zones. But, um, I hear what you're saying.
No, it seems to me that they bought this property and they're in a big hurry to get something on it. And they're not thinking right because this doesn't make sense.
Well, let's just put it, they're not thinking the same way as you are. Sir, can I, uh, can you give us your address?
Eighty sixty four Survey Avenue.
Can you spell your last name?
F I X.
I didn't come expecting to speak tonight and I would be doing so on behalf of the project. And if I missed my opportunity, just a second. I may be able to get some clarity some answers.
I am going to give the opportunity to the applicant to address the issues that were raised by the opponent. So there may be an opportunity for you in there. We're, we're not about so rigidly that we aren't willing to hear reasonable testimony.
I think I did you provide a little sign in though, sir? I didn't, but I will.
Yeah, please do. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? Come on up, sir.
Yeah, he'll be next.
I need his name first though, before I go on the other. Who just spoke?
Lazarides.
Steve Lazarides.
Steve Lazarides was asked to sign in and speak later.
Right.
My name is Barry Hurtwick. N I C E R T W E C K. On eight one zero one Survey Avenue. And my concern is strictly personal. Uh, we built a house on survey fourteen years ago. My wife has chronic progressive MS. One of the most important issues in dealing with MS is stress. The additional noise pollution and other pollutants, the traffic, uh, would really be disruptive. The house that we built is completely accessible. That means there's no front step. We have extra wide doorways. We have a handicapped accessible bathroom. We have everything that can be right. If we have a disrupted area, property values go down, other losses. I can't guarantee the same quality of life for my wife so that she can have, um, a decent life for the remainder of her years. So my appeal to you is personal, that you consider the impact of the community and the people that are, are present as homeowners on what would happen with this sort of activity. That's it.
Do you have any questions for?
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask you a question. And this may be something that a lot of people would answer the same way that you do. But when you purchased that lot for construction, whether it was fourteen or fifteen years ago, did you do that knowing, A, that the neighborhood in which you were proposing to build it was residential? And B, you know, was some security in the knowledge that the property, you know, to the north of you was zoned rural residential?
Sure, that was our sense of security we had. And there was so much that, that really was important for us. Access to great schools, to a great community. It's, it's been a wonderful experience for us. This would be really disruptive and, and obviously harmful.
That was my question.
Any other persons in opposition?
Um, my name is Gianna Hawkins. And I live at thirty nine seven Mount Pleasant Road. And I'm here to share with you what I've experienced. I live a mile from the construction at Comdok on Pittsburgh Road. It's a nightmare. We lived in our house for forty years. It's residential, went to North Canton Schools. All the kids are professional, great place. It's country in the background. You'd be in our house at five o'clock. You ought to see the traffic. How would you like that in front of your house? And now you want to build something in the back?
Please address the board.
Excuse me?
Please address the board.
Okay. We see deer. It's country in the back. But when I go out the front, industry's all around me. And now, if this happens, we're surrounded. Fortunately, the church behind us owns the property directly behind us. But you cannot believe the noise we hear from the construction on Pittsburgh Road. Even the dog jumps. So I just want to share with you, think long and hard. We moved to the area because it was country. I understand there's changes, but is this really what we want for our community? Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Can you show me relative to this parcel? Please step up here, um, which, or where you live? Is this your property here next to the church?
No, I'm the fourth house from the church. It turned to the right off of Pittsburgh.
It's Pittsburgh.
Yes, it's fourth one, you turn to the right.
One, two, three, four.
Yes.
Does that look like you? Does that look like your house? Smaller front yard, larger backyard?
Yeah, yeah, we have.
With an open area, uh, it looks like agricultural behind you?
Right, exactly. And we have two lots. We have an acre and a half, one lot's empty.
So you own lots, lots of you?
You own a lot toward Pittsburgh Road from you?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. I did not, we did not get a letter. But the mailman was nice and told us why you would get a letter. So I'm here to share with you, you know, it's not going to be fun. It's all in my territory.
Are you in Jackson Township?
No, we're plain. We're, it's really unique. The lake is over here, Jackson's over there and Green's on the other side. And the kids all went to North Canton Schools. Any other questions? But I support the, I support you guys totally.
You're guarding the corner of our township. You're guarding the corner of our township.
Absolutely.
Keep up the good work. Who else do we have? Anybody? Okay.
Anybody here need a break? You guys okay?
Okay. At this time, I would ask the applicant, if you or anyone else on your behalf would like to address some of the concerns raised hereby the other witnesses.
Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to invite Steve, make his comment, and then I would have got to be the floor. Okay? May I do that?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We need to swear you in. Sir, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give is true as you barely nearly say it is true?
I do.
Okay. Come on up and give your name and address here.
My name is Steve Lazarides, spelled L.A.Z.A.R.I.D.E.S. I live at five-eight-one Redfield Lane in Copley, Ohio. I actually grew up in Plain Township, not far from here, fifty-fifth and Market. Don't live here anymore, but I wanted to provide some context as to why or how this site was selected. I assure you, it was not arbitrary. Mr. Samarjin hired me. I'm a commercial real estate broker with a firm called C.B.R. And when he began discussions with Comdoc about a new facility, the question arose, where should that facility be located? And at that time, he asked me to survey the market for him in and around the northern end of Stark County and the southern end of Summit County. We put a list of sites together, probably in the neighborhood of twelve to fifteen different sites. And a process took place whereby the sites were reviewed, vetted, the list was narrowed down. Ultimately, it came down to a site or two in Jackson Township versus a site or two in Green where they were already located. They chose the Roar Farm for a number of reasons, and with the proximity of Roar Farm, the Jackson Township portion, the western side of Pittsburgh, is part of the same larger site that this Plain Township acreage also is part of. The proximity to two interstate entrance and exits was important. The fact that in Jackson Township versus the city of Green, you don't have an income tax ramification per payroll. The proximity to the airport was an important benefit of the site. Being that close to the county line, the folks that worked at the Green location weren't being asked to travel quite so far, even though they're relocating, it was nearby. So, the impetus behind this acquisition was Comdoc. During the process of acquiring the Comdoc property, the remainder of the Roar Farm was put up for auction. When the signs went up, immediately my client made an inquiry. Why don't we buy that acreage as well? It offered many of the same advantages as the western side of Pittsburgh, with perhaps one very nice additional benefit, which is a wonderful line of sight to the highway. That sight on top of the hill is visible from I-77, believe it or not. I recommend looking at it for very long while you're driving, and you're supposed to laugh. But, anyway, in addition to the benefits I've shared on the, on the, the Comdoc site, the Plain Township site offered this sightline. So, I assure you, when, when a question comes up, how would they arrive at this site? It was not arbitrary. There are a lot of things going for the site that presented value to not only the would-be tenant, which is Comdoc, but the would-be developer, which is Mr. Samarjin. So, he proceeded to negotiate with Mr. Roar and the Roar family. By that point, actually, Mr. Roar was deceased, unfortunately. But the auction process was called off, Mr. Samarjin bought the property. The nine acres in front that were part of Jackson Township were acquired along with the thirty acres approximately in the back that were part of Plain Township. So, the hope was that through this process, that site could be rezoned and a proper industrial warehouse tenant could be identified for that site. So, I wanted to share those thoughts, so that the group could understand the thought process that went into acquiring this property.
Any questions?
Sure. Thank you for sharing your thought process. Just so I and the board understand, the applicant, that is the purchaser, and you understood at the time that the purchase was being contemplated, first, that this property was zoned rural residential, which implies that township is probably the most open kind of residential zone you could have. I mean, that was a low-established pick, it was considered by the purchaser, correct?
Yes.
And the purchaser was aware, or should have been, through due diligence, that there was a significant residential neighborhood abuts to this property with homes that people had lived in for a number of years. So, that was clear to the purchaser as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I take it as part of your due diligence and your applicant's due diligence, you probably did drive to Mount Pleasant about seven a.m., eight a.m., four-thirty p.m., five-thirty p.m., and noticed the steady stream of traffic traveling east and west on that road, correct?
Correct.
It would be fair for me to say state that the intersection of Pittsburgh may bear and Mount Pleasant, if you're trying to get from I-77 to North Canton to the east, it often takes two to three changes of light to make it through that intersection?
I would consider it.
Okay, well, I will assure you that having done that myself a number of times, that is in fact the case. So, those are my questions.
I have a question. Touting the elevated location and the visual, would it be appropriate then to say that if buffers were required between this site and the residential properties adjoining, that maybe the typical buffers, the height of them might need to be increased in order to obscure the, the visual of the industrial use and the adjoining residential use?
I think I would defer to Tom on that, being an engineer, myself not having those same qualifications. We looked at it quite simply as the, the sightline between the highway and the top of the hill was unobstructed. I, I can't speak to the math as to what the barriers, quite possible what you're saying is true.
I don't think it'd need to be rocket science to say you put a sixty-foot building on a hill, as opposed to putting a sixty-foot building on a flat area, that you might need to raise the buffers if you are truly trying to buffer adjoining uses from, from...
That is a fair statement. I would offer that in our line of work, while not impossible, it's highly unlikely that a building that tall would be built there. It'd be, the later the day is, probably thirty to thirty-two foot at the most. Not saying they wouldn't try to build higher, but it's, it's not normal.
Is it possible that this would be quite attractive, building that people might not be so offended by changes?
Absolutely. Well, and...
No, I'm, I'm serious about this. If you get a, a corporate headquarters of some kind, combined with a light industrial use, and they have offices and whatnot, they might very well have an aesthetic that might be less offensive than the typical industrial...
Yes. And, and I would argue that the Comdoc building goes towards that, that length to, to...
Okay, let's have some order. They were respectful when you were talking, did you say?
The answer's yes.
All right. Okay. Knowing the owners, apparently you have some connection with them, do you perceive that they would be receptive to modifications of the, of the plan to address some of the concerns that were raised tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, you want to finish up?
Yes, sir, I'd like to. I wanted, Steve, I want to thank Steve for that. I'll, to address some of the concerns. A, the likelihood, the, the last one, the height of the building, in today's world, in an industrial building, sixty feet is too high. Forty feet is generally absolute maximum, and that's probably where we might hop out if we did that. Generally, what we're building right at Mollet's in the thirty, thirty-five foot range. In terms of appearances, we are concerned about the appearance of the buildings that we built. We're concerned about the buildings that we already own and buy and renovate. This operation has some thirty or forty million square feet of buildings that they've bought and redone, refurbished. The Comdoc facility, I happen to like it. I've had a lot to do with it, so I think it's gonna be pretty nice. We get the landscape, we get the brick on, it's gonna appear decent, more so than some of the other structures in the area. But, beauties in the eye of the beholder anyway. But yes, we definitely would consider conditions on the use of the property. In terms of a buffer, if fifty feet isn't enough, we can, we actually, conversely about that, what we really need to do in terms of buffer, it's not a closed issue by any stretch of imagination for us. And the other thing is that we're not gonna keep it on top of that hill, we're gonna trim that hill down, because we have a bright spot. And right now, we've trimmed off probably ten, twelve feet off that hill. So, the building itself, would it be lowered? Would it be lowered below the homes in the donationary? Perhaps. Can't tell yet. We don't have a user yet, so we can't, you know, specifically say which way we could Obviously, the Comdoc building was sighted, you know, a sight from the highway. We would do the same thing with this site. Noise, we're not talking about trucks at night. We're talking about loading trucks. On the Comdoc site, they're box trucks, there are old copies that go at night. They load them up, they shut the door, in the morning, the driver comes in, gets in the truck, and goes wherever he needs to. That's different than a container operation at night. Generally, the people we've talked to do not have nighttime operations of that nature. That doesn't mean there would be one, but we have no intention of trucks out there at night. That is not the use for that particular property. So, some of the permitted uses that you have would be automatically dropped out. We would drop them out. We would not consider them. So, those are some of the issues. Light, we direct the lights down onto the property away from residential neighborhood. You want to be a bright spot in there? Yes. We can control the amount of time that the lights are on, so that, you know, they're not on all night. But light is, is a detriment, crime, and a few other things. Safety in particular, if it's necessary. So, those things would be considered, absolutely. So, we're not averse to take a look at what we agree we need to do at all. This is not a take it or leave it deal for us. Any other questions? Have I addressed enough?
Here's my concerns.
Yes, sir.
So, so here, here's our zoning now. So, as you can see, all the purple over here, that's Jackson Township here. That's all industrial. So, I understand, I understand the need for the industrial. We also have across the street. So, I understand. However, when Jackson Township was making this industrial, they didn't have R1 residential sitting right next to it. So, it was very easy for them to be able to make that decision. For us, all this yellow here is all R1 residential. Over here is R2 against Pittsburgh, which is potentially multifamily homes, but still residential. So, that's, that's kind of where the, that's the sticky situation, I suppose, because having industrial right next to the residential, that's what most of the concerns are all about. Jackson didn't have that problem, because of the fact that everything around them has been industrial forever. So, yeah, even, even over in Lake Township, everything over there is R2 all around it. So, there's, there's a lot of multifamilies around Debold. So, I just want to express my concern with that.
I appreciate it.
No, no questions from you?
I thank the applicant and all the witnesses for their input tonight. If the testimony is complete, up to the board now to deliberate on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I give... Mr. Chairman, simply to get the matter on the table, and this is in no way an exception of how I would vote, but I will move for approval of Amendment five-seventy-three-dash-one-eight.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the application, which is change, zone change from rural residential to I-1 for the subject parcel.
Can we deliberate?
Discussion.
I have comments. It's probably no secret to anybody who's been listening to me, but I plan to vote no for a variety of reasons, but three in particular. One, a lot of the people who live in the neighborhoods to the south purchased their properties, knowing that was a residential neighborhood and that the area zoned to the north that was zoned rural residential. That's a factor that has to be considered. Two, the applicant purchased the property knowing that it was zoned RR, knowing that properties to the south were zoned residential, and in fact, had residences that had been there for some time. In other words, the applicant took the risk that Plain Township might not vote for a zone change. My third principal reason for voting no is that I, I understand that many applicants stand before us and say, I'm gonna put up something that's beautiful, that it'll be obtrusive, but the fact of the matter is, is that once this property is rezoned, then you could sell the property to somebody who would be less scrupulous. Or, you could change your mind, but the neighbors to the south, and frankly, the neighbors to the west and across the street in Lake Township have been there for a long time. I don't believe that they should bear the risk of what would happen on that property. The person or entity that should bear the risk is the applicant who purchased the property knowing it was zoned rural residential, and thus I plan to vote no.
I, I agree with what you're saying. Not the, the fear of the unknown, not knowing who's gonna be there, not knowing what kind of industry's gonna be there. That's... That's, that makes me a little nervous, because like you said, once it's rezoned, then it takes away a lot of the, it takes away a lot of the potential rules that we can potentially have. Yeah, that's about it.
Yeah, I, I echo a lot of the concern of Plain Township here. I plan to vote no on this. You know, in consideration of what this might do to traffic and, you know, the buffer that we discussed tonight, I, I just think that there's too many, too many factors and too many impacts to all of the residential. Those are my concerns. In my view, the property would best or better be presented under a PUD plan to make it blend a little better, both in all directions. That would be a principal reason for me to vote no among the many reasons that my fellow members have identified.
I am of the belief that the denial recommendation of the RPC is more than just perfunctory. I think they actually studied this, and I concur with the result they reached, that a modification of this may be appropriate long-term, considering the other dynamic, what's going on in the area. The proposed application is offensive in a number of ways, and particularly in its insensitivity to the adjoining residential uses. And so I'm inclined to deny the application also. So if there's no further discussion, let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Craig?
No.
Mr. Seberg?
No.
Mr. Rebacker?
No.
Mr. Harrison?
With that, I would firstly like to thank everybody for their reasonableness and tempered comments tonight. I also have one other item that we apparently, I apparently overlooked, and that is the review of minutes from the previous meeting. They have been submitted for circulation before the meeting today. Does anyone have any proposed changes or additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, we have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any analysts? Okay. Any other business which to undertake tonight? If not, a call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll give a second motion.
Okay.
In favor? Aye. Opposed? Don't be down. We'll see you in December.